I'll call this meeting to order. I don't have a gavel to bang you in. It's probably in the new city hall, everybody. So, welcome to the Fargo Planning Commission meeting. The hour is 3:00 or shortly thereafter. It's December 4th, and welcome. First item on the agenda is to approve the order of agenda. We have a couple of things to go over here. Item one, continued, is the NSC addition continued to February 5th. Item two, Newman Center will be heard. Item three, Landis Farm addition is withdrawn. Item four, Garrig addition will be heard. Item five, Egbert, O'Neil, and Hagert subdivision will be heard. Item six, Reeves addition is withdrawn. And then, under other items, the Community Development Block Grant will be heard as well. With that, are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Can we move items four and five to get that approved? Or to get that heard before we go on to the Newman Center?
Yeah, so you are requesting four and five be moved to be heard first, and then we'll hear item two. That's a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. The minutes from our meeting on November 6th were in your packet. Any discussion, any corrections, additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item C, brown bag lunch. We are having a special brown bag with some additional guests that will be held Thursday, December 13th. We don't typically have one in December. But Commissioner Grinberg, do you want to speak to that at all?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission. Nicole and I had a visit and then followed up with, get to your thoughts. Years ago, I heard a presentation by Mark Peel with the Clay County Historical Society on the history of Fargo-Moorhead, and in particular, some of the slides, et cetera, that featured the Mid-America Steel site. As many of you know, or most of you probably should know, the City of Fargo owns the Mid-America Steel site. And when that is transitioned into the industrial park, the City of Fargo's going to have to decide what to do with that piece of land once it's redeveloped. And I thought it would be a great historical overview of the history of Fargo-Moorhead, and sometime just to reflect, as well as think about what the future might hold for that piece of property as we grow as a community and region. So that's kind of the genesis behind the idea.
Thank you.
One other thing. Tony, you probably already know about this, but it used to be where they kept the trolley cars? When they had a trolley system in Fargo-Moorhead that Fargo-Moorhead shared, that was the garage for the trolleys. You knew that, though.
Well, I thought it was at the mayor's home last night in Jefferson Neighborhood when we read the history of the overlay project.
That's right. Yeah.
For those in the audience, the mayor in 1886 would ride the trolley from his house in Jefferson to City Hall.
Went right by his house, stopped there, pick him up, and bring him back downtown.
Those were the days. With that, I'm sure you saw in your email there's invitations to that brown bag. With that, let's go into the public hearing items. First off, item number four, Garrig addition. And Kylie will walk us through this one.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Item number four, titled Garrig addition, is located at 1702 40th Street South and 3926 17th Avenue South. The applicant, Nate Vollmuth with Pace's Lodging, is requesting a minor subdivision which will replat lots 1 and 2, block 3, West Acres 4th addition. The applicant is proposing a two-lot, one-block minor subdivision. Currently, there are two vertical lots. The Garrig addition minor plat will create two horizontal lots that will take access off of 40th Street South. Staff has not received any inquiries regarding this application. Based on the subdivision criteria of the LDC, staff is recommending approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kylie. Commissioners, any questions? Hearing none. Do we hear from the applicant? Okay. Any questions for the applicant? We'll open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the audience wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application? Just as a reminder as we get started, if you do have a comment, please come up to the podium and introduce yourself. And then, we like to limit it to a three-minute comment period. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions? Are we ready to act?
Madam Chair, I'll offer the motion that's included in our staff report.
Okay. Motion. Is there a second? There's a second. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Scherling?
Yes.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Staufferin?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
McGelkey?
Aye.
Tassa?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye. Motion is carried. Second item we will hear is number five. That one, Megan, will walk us through.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Item five is Egbert, O'Neil, and Hagert subdivision. The subject property is located at 404 25th Street South. The entitlement requested is a zone change from SR4, single-dwelling commercial and general commercial, to general commercial. The applicant, Mr. Kenschwanki, is here if you have any questions. The applicant has recently acquired two adjacent properties, zoned SR4, and then combined them with the existing property which has the Quality Auto Body Shop. The residential buildings that were there were demolished in November of 2017. The applicant intends to make some improvements to the site. Property has an existing conditional overlay on the property that requires an aesthetic buffer on the east side of the property directly adjacent to 24th Street South, which will be reviewed at the time of permitting for any improvements to the site. There have been no inquiries received on this application, and staff finds that all criteria are met and are recommending approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Megan. Are there any questions at this time, Commissioners? Okay, we'll invite the applicant up if you want to comment on, just for questions. Okay, are there any questions for the applicant? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Commissioners, any questions, discussion? Are you ready to act?
I will move to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
McGelkey?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Scherling?
Yes.
Schneider?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Staufferin?
Aye.
Tassa?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you. On to item 2A, B, and C, St. Paul's Newman Center addition. And Donald will walk us through this one.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Donald Kress from the Department of Planning and Development. We are looking at items 2A, B, and C, the St. Paul's Newman Center addition. That is three items. There is a plat, a zone change that includes a PUD overlay zone, and a PUD master plan. Just for the benefit of our audience here, Commissioners, I know you all know this, but we'll just make the point that staff, myself will do a presentation here today. The applicant will. Three members of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association have a presentation they would like to make, an additional. Member of the Roosevelt Neighborhood has sent in some slides he'd like to present. And then, obviously, there would be the public comment period as well. Your commission would today find either a recommendation to approve, a recommendation to deny, or perhaps a recommendation to continue. In the case of the approval or denial, in either case, this project goes forward to the City Commission for the final decision by the City Commissioners. And that would probably take place sometime in January. We don't have an exact date on that. It depends on internal review time of some other matters that we don't have a hard schedule for. But, so just so everyone understands that this goes forward, no matter what your recommendation for approval or denial is, if it were continued, I imagine your commission would continue it to a date certain. So the folks would know when that's going to be. As you may recall, this project was last heard at September 4th, 2018, Planning Commission hearing, at which time your commission recommended continuance. It was continued at the October 2nd and November 6th meetings. No testimony was taken, no presentations were made, and no action was taken by your commission at those meetings. So today's presentation, for staff's part, is going to focus on the changes in the project since September 4th. This is summarized in your staff report. We'll also note for the record here that your staff report contains, I think, 53 pages of public comment, including sign-in sheets to meetings. These are, we believe, all the written comments we have received since the project was submitted. We did an open house in August, and so that's all the comments in there. So even the stuff that was in the last packet is included in this one. So that should be a, I'll throw a record of that. So again, here, St. Paul's Newman Center is the 1,100 block of University Drive and 12th Street North. The current zoning is a limited commercial, MR3 and SR2 here. Again, there's that location. St. Paul's Newman Center Chapel and a number of residences here as well. So the revised project, we'll start out with some graphics to get this in your picture, in your mind here. So again, this would be 12th Avenue. This would be University Drive. This would be the St. Paul's Newman Center Chapel and Administration Building, and the faith-based housing. And then, the market-rate housing wraps around a little bit like this. You will notice here, here's an addition from the last version of this project. These are 13 townhomes here. They're attached townhomes. But there are 13 townhomes here on the 12th Street side. These have been added by the developer. Also, the height of the market-rate housing has been stepped down from six stories to five, and along 11th here, stepped down to four. We'll talk some more about that in a moment. Here's a view from the opposite corner here. So this is 12th Street and 12th Avenue. Here again, you see those townhomes. You can see the step-down here along 11th Avenue, and the parking area here, and the extent of the chapel here. And then, we have one more graphic for the townhomes. These are actual townhomes someplace. These are examples. But then, these are how the townhomes might look. These are the front and rear view. This would be the front view as you're looking at them. That is the 12th Street side. And this is the rear with the garages underneath here. So this isn't two rows of townhomes. It's the view front and back from that. So that's the visual we want to have in your heads as we're going forward for this. So the project changes, we'll note these, and we'll talk about them in some more detail in a moment here. As you see, reducing the number of market-rate housing from 107 to 87, reducing the number of faith-based housing from 29 to 25. There is also included one unit of group living, which is the priests' quarters, which has been consistent all the way through that. That's just for the priests, so that's not available to the public. Reducing the number of onsite parking spaces from 274 to 217 for the combined market-rate and faith-based housing. Adding 13 attached single-family townhomes that we just looked at. And these townhomes have their own parking. So they meet the LDC parking requirements of two spaces per unit. They have their own 26 parking spaces on their own lot. So they're not counted in the total. Stepping down the number of stories of the market-rate housing, and revising the plat from a two-lot configuration to a three-lot configuration, and removing the University Drive access to the underground parking. You may remember that was originally on there. And actually, at the recommendation of staff, the developer removed that. That just was not an effective access for that project. Look at the plat first. And here, it's the same total area, 3.82 acres, but the lot lines have been modified. There's a lot of lines on here, we realize, but we'll take a look at it. This is Lot 1. Lot 1 now goes all the way over to here. And this is in response to a question I believe one of the Commissioners had, or one of the folks in the audience had, about having the faith-based housing on the same lot as the Newman Center Chapel. So that is, this now accounts for that. So the entire chapel here and the Administration Building with faith-based housing is all on one lot. This Lot 2 is where the market-rate housing is. And then, Lot 3 here is where the townhomes are. So they're all on one lot. They would be sold as condominiums, as opposed to having individual lots. And then, that's just the signature page. And the applicant has provided a signed Mylar as required to us this afternoon. So just looking at those lots in a little more detail. Again, the same additions, the same acres. Lot 1 is much larger than it used to be. Lot 2 is smaller, and then Lot 3 was added, not in the original. And then, that just breaks that down. This is in your staff report. This is now the site plan. Similar to earlier site plans, the south side gets getting changed more and more every time. So again, here's the chapel. Here's the Administration Building, Parish Hall, and the faith-based housing. As you see, this line here, that's that lot line between Lot 1 and 2 we just talked about. Lot 2 here is the faith-based housing. And Lot 3, as you see, represented there, are where the townhomes would be. So the access, there is no longer an access off University Drive. The accesses are off 11th and off 12th. And then, there's the underground parking under here as well, plus the surface parking. Look at the parking in a minute. And then, the applicant has just noted some landscaping items on here as well. This is the PUD grid that appears in your staff report. This is one of the basic documents we start with. This looks complicated, and unfortunately, the type is a little small because I tried to get the whole thing on one slide here because I know that perhaps our testifiers may wish to refer to this. I wanted to keep it handy. What this does is it looks at the LDC requirement. These are the PUD modifications that were requested in the earlier version that went to hearing on September 4th. And then, these are the current version, we say the revised version. Some of the things are the same as the earlier version. They're just noted the same as previous. But we'll talk about density here because I know this is an important topic to all concerned on this project. The density overall, we look at this as an entire project. So this would include the faith-based housing, the market-rate housing, and the individual townhomes. This is, so you take the total number of units and you divide it by the total acreage of 3.82, and you get 32.9 dwelling units per acre. So we'll round it to 33. This is lesser density than the earlier project, which was 37 dwelling units per acre. But again, it is greater than the 24 dwelling units per acre that would be allowed on the MR3 base zoning because as part of this, the entire block is being rezoned to MR3 with the PUD overlay. And again, what the PUD does, as provided by our LDC, is to provide an opportunity to ask for changes in those development standards. Our ordinance does not ever list a limit on that. You could conceivably ask for a large number, a large change. That's what the public hearing part does. That's when you Commissioners and the City Commissioners deem what is appropriate for the neighborhood. So that's the control on that. Setbacks, again, we've modified the setbacks a little bit here to accommodate the building. It's a little closer to the street than the University Drive than it would normally be. The building coverage, the LDC for the MR3 zone would require a maximum of 35% of the lot area. Here, they're increasing it to 41. We'll look at the parking in a minute. The landscaping is about the same. On the RPS, there actually is the residential protection standards for height. Since they've stepped the building down on the south side, on the 11th Avenue side, and backed off the chapel a little bit, there really is only one part where they need a height modification to the RPS zone. That is the 76 to 100 feet from residential line. Not to dizzy you here, we're going to go back a little bit. But that line, whoops. That line cuts through the back of the chapel here. It just nicks the back of the building. So there's no neat way architecture that did notch the building in there. So it is, again, reduced from what was requested last time. And then, the open space, again, 35 feet would be required by the MR3 zone. As a minimum here, they're decreasing it to 25%. Here's the parking layout that shows the above-ground and underground parking, and includes the parking here for the townhomes. So part of this is underground, obviously. This is the underground part. And then, we'll do a parking analysis here. This is rather detailed breakdown here, but I figured this would be the easiest way to do it. So on Lot 1, there are two uses there. There's the multi-dwelling residential, that is the faith-based housing, and then, the group living, which is for the priests there. The LDC requirement here would be 2.2 spaces per unit, so 57 spaces total. They're providing 77. They're modifying this parking standard to 0.9 spaces per bedroom. And they're doing that for that and the group living, as well as the multi-dwelling residential on Lot 2, that is, the market-rate housing. Again, the 2.25 spaces per unit would be required. 196 would be required. 125 would be provided. This is a little different way to calculate parking based on the number of bedrooms than by unit. In a case like this where there are going to be a larger number of three- and four-bedroom units, since this is catered toward college students, than would normally be there, there's a point at which you get actually a little bit ahead. If everything was one- and two-bedroom units and you had required two spaces per, you'd always have enough. But when you start getting a lot of three- and four-bedroom units, even that extra 0.25 unit, it's hard to lose. So it depends on what the actual breakdown of the three- and four-bedroom units are. Perhaps the developer can tell us more on that. So that's the basic modification of the parking, that they're taking 0.9 spaces per bedroom, not per unit, but per bedroom. So 0.9 spaces for one bedroom, 1.8 spaces per two, 2.7 for three, 3.6 for four. And then, on the single-family attached, that is the townhomes, that meets the LDC requirement. I'll make one note here on math. When I calculate this, I always round up, no matter what the fraction is. So you might figure this a slightly different way. It makes a difference of about 1.5 spaces. But if you need, if I do the math on this and take it out, and it's 8.1 spaces, I count it as nine because I'm going to have 0.1 of a parking space. So this rounds up, so it's maybe a little parking-heavy, you might say. For the Lot 1, which is where the chapel is and the St. Paul's Newman Center, the LDC for churches only requires a parking requirement based on the seating. So it's 0.4 spaces per seat. As you know, many of our churches have attachments of Administration Buildings, Educational Buildings, so on. So there's no actual real requirement for visitor parking for the chapel. There are about 11 spaces left over after you subtract out all these. So they can be used for general, you know, visiting or general chapel business during the day. And then, finally, the major parking requirement for the chapel, which is the 0.4 spaces per seat. There are approximately 500 seats in the chapel. The architects have told us there's probably actually fewer than that in real life, but we're calling it 500 just for the basis of calculation. So that'd be 200 spaces. This has been accounted for as part of this PUD with the off-site parking, which has been an arrangement between the developer and two off-site entities. I believe with NDSU and with Mr. Sabo, who owns property there, most well-known near the Bison Turf there. And that would account for the off-site parking. Right now, there's, I believe, about a 30-space parking spot lot on the site there of the St. Paul's Newman Center. And I believe many people do walk to that, but obviously, some must drive and park somewhere as well. So, but there is, so that's how that parking is accounted for. Here, these are just some extra things that were actually in our last PowerPoint that we'll keep there for a reference in case anyone needs. And we do show the ownership, as well as the Roosevelt, NDSU Neighborhood Land Use Plan. As we said, we've had a number of meetings since your last meeting here on September 4th. There's a timeline that's in your, well, it's not a timeline. It's just a list of the meetings that is in your staff report. We appreciate the participation of the neighborhood in this. The developer has, as you see, made a number of changes to this, and really significant changes since it was originally proposed two years ago. But we're just sticking with what's happened since September 4th mainly. And, but again, there's been a lot of participation. Those meetings are summarized in there. And we just want to make sure that they, folks get recognized for their comments and for their participation. That's an important part of our process. No matter what your opinion is, it's an important part of your process that you participate. So. Make sure I'm covered here. Okay. So that is a summary of the changes since the September 4th meeting. I think that is probably the end of staff's presentation here. And then, it's up to you, if you have questions for me, and then go on to the other presentations, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Commissioners, at this time, are there any questions for Donald? Commissioner Morgan?
Donald, were there originally two lots rather than three?
Yes, ma'am, there were two lots, as you suggest. I think maybe you made that comment as to why in the earlier version, I didn't put the old graphics on here because I figured I'd just get too confused. The earlier one, you might remember that Lot 1, that the chapel was on, the faith-based housing was actually on the same lot that the market-rate housing was on. And now, that's been changed. So all the diocese zone items or uses are on the one lot. That's Lot 1. And then, they added the third lot to put those townhomes in.
Okay, is there any reason that it was necessary to do that? Because we had always been told previously that it was all one project.
Well, it's figured as all one project. It's three lots, but it's a unified development, so we figure it as all one project, no matter how many lots there are. That's something we do on a number of applications. So it's not just this. So we figure the whole thing as one project despite the number of lots.
But it could be divided at some point.
Well, it'd change the numbers because the PUD is based on figuring it all as one project.
So it'll always remain as one project?
That's what the PUD provides for, ma'am.
Okay. All right, does it have anything to do with the parking?
Well, they're sharing the parking in all three lots. And then, the buildings are contiguous, as you see. And I believe you're aware of this, ma'am, that the buildings here are, this is one physically contiguous building because the parking is underneath it, so it all has to be, there's no walls that go all the way down. As to how that would ever be divided, I think you may wish to say that question for Mr. Nygaard, the developer. Again, we're taking the PUD forward as it's, you know, one continuous building there, at least on the University Drive side, and it's evaluated as one project for parking and density.
Okay, just one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
The east side there, where the townhomes are?
This one.
Yeah. So that isn't obviously contiguous.
How do you mean that?
It's not linked to the other buildings.
Well, yeah, that's not, yeah. Like I said, this building is contiguous.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you broke that out, which I suppose one could do, that, again, we're figuring the density on the whole area here. I suppose you could break that out and re-figure this density. But again, we're figuring on the whole project because it's coming forward as one project.
Thanks, Donald.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. Hear from the applicant?
Yes, ma'am. I think everybody's got to use our same graphics. So I'm just going to go, so we don't just keep clicking through here. So I'm going to set it to this, and then I'm going to be handy here. Dr. Leffer has his own slides, which we'll bring up. But we'll let folks go with our things there. And again, we've encouraged folks to keep this to about 15 minutes in the interest of fairness to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Yeah, and I used up a lot of time last time, so I might not use my whole 15 minutes this time. Donald did a good job of summarizing kind of how we got to where we're at today. But before I get into some of the details, I just want to introduce some of the people of our group that are here today. We have Kevin Bartram here in the front row. He's in charge of the design of the Diocese property. Alyssa Novotny is with the Roers Design Team. She designed the housing, market rate housing. Father Chaney and Earl Wilhelm from the Diocese are here. Matt Nygaard and Danielle Paulus from the development and operational team. So, some of our questions might get off of just strictly development. We might refer to them. So, thank you guys for coming. I also want to reiterate something Donald said, which is, this has been a process that's really taken us over two years, but it's gotten really intense in the last 90 days or so, and I want to thank the Roosevelt Neighborhood for their input and their patience working with us and coming up with some of the solutions here today, and also the planning staff, I thought, you know, really took a serious interest in how this turned out, and everybody has worked hard. And I think what we have today is a project that's better than the one we started with four months ago, so thank you all for that. From a very big-picture macro level, when we started this project back in 2016, we had 162 apartment units originally planned for this, and we're at 112 today. So, we've reduced that by 50 apartment units by over 30%, which is a significant change. But we've also added 13 market rate condominiums or townhomes to this site, which is something that we heard from the neighborhood over and over again, is that they want to see, you know, how can we, in these redevelopment plans, address the need for affordable housing in the Roosevelt Neighborhood area? So, we started considering this as a possibility. I think it's one of the neat things that has come out of the process, and we're excited about that. But before we get into the details about those, and I'll provide you some of our thoughts on how we will see those develop, I just wanted to do a brief walk-around of the whole project, and we'll start with the St. Paul Newman Center. 90 days ago, when we met before this very commission, you know, we heard a lot of feedback to the project, primarily it was about density and coverage of that lot. So, we went back to the Diocese, and we sort of rethought everything, and we just challenged, you know, the needs that they had, the objectives that they had, both from a housing and a ministerial side. We did that for ourselves, and as a result, you know, they've scaled back their operations, we've scaled back some of ours to get where we're at today, so it's been an all-inclusive process. I'm going to talk a little bit about the exterior of the development, because, you know, the numbers and the parking ratios and all those things never cover that, but what I want to reiterate is that this is really a high-class, first-class development opportunity for this block. We see this block as very unique, you know, there's no other block like this in Fargo across from the entrance of NDSU at the intersection of two major corridors. It really deserves some special attention and treatment, and thankfully, we have the Diocese as an entity that recognizes that, and they're going to make the investment accordingly. So, the Diocese building, as you see it, the exact materials haven't been picked out, but it's all going to be either brick or stone. So, a very first-class building, it'll have a metal roof, so it'll be very attractive. Their housing will be very similar to that. The faith-based housing portion will mimic some of the materials that are used throughout the church building, so that itself will be another similar-quality building. When we transition into the market rate, we'll be using the same high-quality materials, but in a different mix. There will be a distinctive difference between the two, because we want to show that, but nevertheless, it's going to be a high-quality mix of materials, both in terms of landscaping and finishes. When we get around to the townhomes on this side, you've seen a couple of examples there of what we're hoping to accomplish. Some people have described these as brownstones or something similar to that. This is not a project or product that we've seen successfully executed in the Roosevelt Neighborhood yet, so it's a bit of a mystery for us. We're excited about it. We do hear that there's demand for this kind of housing in the neighborhood, but it's difficult to achieve. And so, we think that this is the right spot, being close to NDSU and close to Roosevelt, where we can try a product like this and be successful with it. These are intended to be for sale, so that's kind of unique as well, not rental. There's 13 of them, as we've proposed right now, and just to give you an idea of the size, they'd be about 1,700 square feet on three levels, three bedrooms, two and a half baths, a nice, single-stall, oversized garage, and a parking spot behind that. So, all, you know, they're self-inclusive, so all of their activity is intended to be on that Lot 3, so they don't have to interact with the apartment activity at all. Who we see for a market there could be a young family, could be a professor, may not be a retired person, just because of the steps, you know, there'll be three different levels here, so it might be difficult for a retired person to find that as a retirement spot, but I think for the young family, it's a good alternative pricing. At this point, of course, it's going to be subject to when we actually finish these, but if we were to build those today, they would be priced in the $275,000 range, so we're not trying to get beyond the affordability factor of a young family. So, that's a little bit about the townhomes and just the overall development concept with the rest of the project. I want to touch just briefly about parking, because I do think that we've really adequately provided for parking, and as you're going to hear comments from the neighbors that we haven't done that, but we have a lot of experience in student housing. We have support and data to back up our contention that what we really need is about .8 stalls per bedroom. We've actually got .9 per bedroom in this scenario and some to spare, and then we're not even taking advantage of the crossover use with the church that we're going to, we think is going to be there. So, we really feel that that's more than adequate. The parking study that we've done supports that, and the experts that have looked at that supported as well. So, I do think we have scientific proof that that does work for us. I want to just walk briefly through the development, the joint development of this, and I think best thing for me is to get to the site plan. Okay, so I just wanted to talk with you briefly about how these projects are married together, both in form and function. Donald touched briefly, first of all, on the underground parking, which today starts here. It starts under the St. Paul Newman Center administrative building and works its way all the way down to the entrance point here. Okay, so that's another significant change that we've made since the last presentation, is that we've added underground parking in this area. Not all of that parking added will be utilized by the Newman Center, so it's assumed that some of the market rate housing will take advantage of the underground parking that we create in that area. If we get up to the living areas, then, if you can imagine, right at this portion of the building here, a coffee shop and bookstore, okay, that's meant to be kind of the central social hub of both the religious and housing side of this development. The corridors that will string through all of these buildings, they'll be connected, so somebody that lives way over here would be able to walk down a corridor, walk down a corridor, and exit right over here at the entrance to the NDSU campus. But the really neat thing, we think, is the livelihood or the lively area right in here, which, like I said, will be coffee shop and kind of a gathering area. Some of the other things where we hope to share facilities is when we get over to the market rate housing, if we go up to the fourth and fifth floor, again, as Donald pointed out, this part of the building along 11th Avenue will be four stories, this part would be five. So, this was originally six stories, and so was this. We've scaled this back one story, this back two stories. What we created there was an outdoor terrace, okay, so we'll have the fifth floor housing here with some common space right on this portion of the building that will look out over into a rooftop terrace. Things you might see up there would be like your clubhouse, a workout area, outdoor amenities like fire pits and maybe lounge areas for kids to be. So, we think that that's a really nice addition, something new to the project that I think will be very beneficial. This is kind of the central corridor of the apartments or the central hub of activity there. You'll have offices, meeting rooms, study lounges, exercise, some smaller exercise areas. So, that is, those kind of facilities are meant to be used by both faith-based and market rate, so again, back-and-forth usage. When we get into the larger student study rooms, et cetera, those will be handled over on the St. Paul Newman Center administrative building. So, lots of things going back and forth, lots of uses going back and forth. We're sharing elevators, stairways, corridors, those types of things. We also talked earlier in our last presentation about the underground water storage for the entire site being underneath these parking lots, and then, of course, a garbage collection will be concentrated over in this area. So, lots of moving parts between the two projects, but collectively, it becomes very efficient, because we don't have to duplicate those things, you know? Each separate project doesn't have to have its own facilities. We can combine them, make them greater and more beneficial. So, again, I think I'll leave it at that. I just want to say that this is a really unique opportunity. I think we've addressed it in a very thoughtful manner. Hopefully, we've created a very positive impact to the neighborhood. We think we have. The townhomes, I think if we can do those and be successful at it, they might end up proving to be a method of redeveloping some other areas in the Roosevelt and downtown Fargo area that would be successful and untried at this point. So, I'm open for any questions at this point.
Thank you, Larry. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Nygaard at this time?
I have a question. So, I was interested in what you were saying about that northwest corner, that it would have a coffee house and some space there. Is any of this open to the public? Of course, the church itself would be on Sundays, but what is the access or security that's going to be in existence between these contiguous spaces?
That's a good question. I'm not sure I have all the answers to the access and security yet. I can tell you that it is open to the public, and so it won't be specifically used by just the residents of this project, so it's meant to be a gathering point that services more than just the people housed in the apartments. There will, you know, the security will have to be electronic with passcodes and things like that, but I'm not exactly sure about all the details.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
All right, thank you very much.
And ma'am, I believe we have three representatives from the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association. Gentlemen, do I all just come up and sit up here? Just be handy? Ken, what do you want me to set this back?
Yeah, sorry. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Ken Enixson. I live in the Roosevelt Neighborhood area, 12th Avenue and A Street, and I'll keep my remarks fairly brief and let others speak in a more detail as necessary. It is, just as a proviso, I think it's possible that you will hear and you've probably heard or seen in some of the remarks in the packet, that some members of the public, they're kind of have a range of issues and frustrations that may not, or are more general versus specific to this project. And I think although we certainly are aware and agree with and sympathize with a lot of those concerns, Jim, Harold, and I are speaking on behalf of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association specifically about this project, and so we just want to make that clear where we're coming from. But I do want to add a little sidebar that's probably more directed to Commissioner Grinberg and the staff, that I think that the fact that you repeatedly hear comments and complaints about things like student conduct and excessive noise and rental blight and partying, it's evidence that residents in our area often don't feel that they have a forum to raise valid concerns to the city, and I think it would be great if the city would institute a regular, ongoing meetings with neighborhoods to listen and provide some actionable solutions to some of these issues that, in some cases, I think we can say have historically been going on for decades. So, and I think that the various neighborhood associations in those core neighborhoods would be happy to assist in such an effort. So, you know, I'd like to just put that forward. So, getting back to the main issue here again, we, as the RNA and as residents of the neighborhood, are definitely appreciative of the fact that the city facilitated further discussion between the developer and the neighborhood representatives, and we're also appreciative of the fact that the ROARs and the Diocese came back with an improved proposal. It was a clear step in the right direction as far as our main concerns about the project, which generally are about population density, building height, and parking. Having said that, we continue to have significant concerns about the latest ROAR's iteration, and we have offered some suggestions that we feel are reasonable, and they're in your packet, and would contribute to a win-win for all parties, and I think Howard will be providing a little more detail on that when he gets up here. Harold, not Howard, sorry. The Planning Commission is under no obligation to approve this proposal, I'm sure you guys know that, but I'd just like to remind you, as written, just because staff recommends approval. Members of this commission should, in my opinion, feel obligated to consider what the long-term effects of high-density development will be on a community and work to preserve the vibrancy that we feel that we're experiencing now and we want to continue in our neighborhood. No matter what the outcome is here and then ultimately at the City Commission, we do want to stress that we do not accept that this proposal become the new norm, setting a precedent for other developers waiting in the wings, because that's exactly what they're going to, how they're going to take this proposal if it's approved by the city. We consider this proposal, because of the unique nature and the combined effort between the Diocese, their effort to expand and improve their overall footprint, which we have iterated on several occasions that we approve and we agree with, but the combined effort of those two entities makes this a fairly special project, hence the reason, the need for the PUD, and we want to make sure that that's clear going forward. What many residents of the core neighborhoods like Roosevelt do expect is that the city initiate a public discussion on land development in core neighborhoods, and we've been asking that for a while now. The discussion over this proposal has raised questions for many in-core neighborhoods, not just in the Roosevelt Neighborhood, as to what the value is of the land development code and neighborhood plans, if, you know, we periodically and repeatedly just set them aside for, you know, high-density proposals. We're left, as the residents of these core neighborhoods, with some questions. Where are the lines going to be drawn? What will be the guiding principles for future development? What is the city's vision for the Roosevelt Neighborhood and other core neighborhoods? And finally, what voice will residents have in determining that vision? Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. My name is Jim Alaskwich. I live at 1016 College Street in North Fargo, and I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Fargo and a member of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you from the perspective of our neighborhood residents, and we think our voice is important in this process. And as a neighborhood, we've strived to really advance our vision for the future, and our vision is that we're the bedroom community to, you know, for faculty, for staff, for students, and for workers in downtown Fargo. We want a safe, walkable neighborhood that provides the amenities that our residents are looking for, and we want the orderly growth of our neighborhood that is provided for within the dimensional standards of our land development code. And so, if I could speak about the land development code for a minute, the dimensional standards that are contained within our LEC are intended to protect each other from... standards that are contained within our LDC are intended to protect each other from overreaching developments. And it helps to, it helps us ensure that we make well-advised decisions about where to locate our homes and our businesses. It's important because it helps preserve property values that might decline if someone pops an undesirable project down in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And homeowners are looking to invest in their properties and the security and the stability that goes with that. Eighty-seven units of high-density housing on one acre does not provide the form of stability to a neighborhood that we're looking for. And we would expect that this commission should protect and preserve the single-family lots in our neighborhood. There was a study done, it's a number of years ago, I know it's been mentioned before, but it was back in 1987. It was called the Improvement Program for NDSU Neighborhood. And it was an action plan that, you know, basically laid out a footprint for our neighborhood. And what was kind of interesting in that report was there was a map that showed that the city successfully downzoned the same block that we're talking about. And the reason for that was to preserve the single-family homes in our neighborhood. It just occurs to me that downzoning a block and then later upzoning it is not a good planning practice. I think it's a waste of everyone's time to do it that way. We also, we don't accept as a norm that the use of PUDs like what is being proposed today, to ask for and receive excessive exemptions from zoning requirements and dimensional standards is a good planning practice. As a neighborhood, we would like to have a public discussion to clarify the land use in our neighborhood. We thought medium-density and mixed-use were synonymous with each other, and that mixed-use did not mean ultra-high density. If our neighborhood goes along with the maximum density that should be allowed for this project in a mixed-density residential neighborhood, it's MR3, and that's what's being asked for today. But the maximum allowed for MR3 is 24 units per acre. Anything above that is really considered university-mixed-use density. And that, and our feeling is that should only be located in the UMU district, which is not where we're talking about. The current project is claiming to be 33 units per acre, and it contains Lot 2, and I think that's shown on your Page 2 of your packet. That is one acre, and it contains 87 units. So that's an effective density of 87 units per acre, or almost four times what's allowed in MR3. In our discussions with the commission and city staff in the past, we were led to believe that our future vision would be enabled by agreements that we made regarding land use planning in the university-mixed-use district. So the question is, why have we created a land use plan, a UMU district, and a neighborhood plan in our neighborhood if it's simply going to be disregarded, and there was never any intention to honor that? Other neighborhoods are looking at this right now, and they're seeing the futility in trying to do any planning with the city, if these plans are simply disregarded and cast away when the dollar signs of shiny new development outweigh the lines that have been previously drawn. We are seeing opportunity for investment right now, as of late, by new homeowners, by groups like Habitat for Humanity, by Rebuilding Together, and the idea of Community Land Trust. And each of these group will want the same protections entrusted to this commission that are embodied in the land development code. They do not want to invest if they feel like their hard work and the dollars that they're putting in are simply going to be wasted in a few years if another development gets proposed and put in. So our hope today is that you will make the effort here to protect and preserve the integrity of the land development code through the action that meets not only the needs of our city, but the needs of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me never make him call on him. I think I'm Harold, but I could be Howard. My name is Harold Thompson. I live at 1309 North 9th Street. My wife and I have lived in the Roosevelt neighborhood for over 40 years. I am a retired from architect, I'm a retired architect, retired after 42 years. And I'd retired a couple of years ago. And since then, I've been working with the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association as a member and shared some of my technical expertise with them. Those who were here three months ago got to hear our presentation. It's all in the packet, and we're not going to go through that again. But the theme was, the project was too tall, too dense, and had, didn't have enough parking. Part of the things that we would like you to empathize with is that we haven't had a lot of time to mourn. An entire city block is being proposed to be eliminated in our neighborhood. There's 100 years of history, good and bad. And so it's just taking us a little bit of time, okay, to have to say goodbye to that with expectation that what we're going to get is better. It's still too tall. It's still too dense. And it still doesn't have enough parking. So first of all, I want to thank the planning commission for voting for a continuance last September. The time since has been very well-spent, has given all of us, and I mean all of us, an opportunity, an opportunity to absorb an abundance of details. Second, I'd like to thank the planning staff for hosting multiple meetings with us and the developer. These meetings were informative and productive. In those meetings, we were asked by the staff, what is your point of compromise? We're here today to let you know that we could provide our conditional support to a project with a density of 30 units per acre. Why 30? Well, there are multiple reasons, and they're all related, of course, to height, density, and parking. The density that's currently proposed under this revision is 30, yeah, is 33 units per acre. We're pleased to see that the staff has been able to somehow convince the developer to reduce that density from 37 to 33. This is a huge step for the neighborhood. As pointed out by the developer, it's begun to address some of the major points of our concern. The apartments are one story lower from 6 to 5. The number of units have been reduced. The parking ratio has been improved from .8 to .9. But we are particularly excited about the addition of the townhomes on 12th Street. The townhomes are a very welcome addition because they will act as a buffer between the homes on 12th Street and the apartment buildings, and they will help to replace some of the single-family homes lost in the demolition. Now, from the city's perspective, they've got to be excited about the change from the original 37 units an acre to 33, because it did not reduce the value of the overall project. When you trade 25 apartments for 13 townhomes, it will probably increase the value for the project. You heard Mr. Nygaard say, "It's a better project." Yes, not only for us, but also for them. From our perspective, we think it can be done, if it's been done once, why not a second time? Why not trade another floor of apartments for another set of townhomes? Why not increase the value of the project by reducing the density to 30 units per acre? 30 units per acre is a reasonable compromise. It's the midpoint between 37 units per acre proposed and the 24 units per acre that's allowed by the MR3 district they're asking for. How do we get there? Well, on the screen is the aerial rendering showing the backside that shows the apartments and shows the church. If you look at the area, right here, between the townhomes and the chapel, there's another, there's enough space there for another set of townhomes. The townhomes in this location would complete the buffer along 12th Street and provide an appropriate urban design element favored by the planning staff, a comment that we heard in our previous meetings with them. All of this can be achieved by taking another floor off the apartments. The apartments along University Drive then would be four stories and match the height of the Bridges Apartments further to the north. Apartments along 11th would be three stories. The parking ratio will be increased to one stall per bed rather than .9, and the density reduced to 30 units per acre. We think all parties win in this scenario. The city and developer retain the overall value of the project. Neighborhood gets townhomes, not only to replace the single-family homes, but also to act as an appropriate buffer. I think we all can live with 30 units per acre. Madam Chairman, we need your help to take the second step. We're hoping that you or one of the commissioners can support a motion to accept the developer's proposal amended to reduce the density to 30 units per acre by removing another floor of apartments and adding another set of townhomes. If accepted, we would bring our support to the city commission. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mister, if we just may do one thing before the break here. Now that we've heard from staff's presentation and the developer and the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, we just want to make sure that we draw your attention to, I believe you know this, but to staff's recommendation, which is for approval, as we went back, we discussed in the beginning, we are approving three things here: a plat, a zone change from the three existing zones to MR3, as has been referenced, with a PUD overlay, and the PUD master land use plan. Also, one more note on this, one, the exhibit in, on our presentation here was marked, "Master Land Use Plan." There is a final plan that will come back to your commission if this is approved. One more time, at the time that they actually start building this, when they submit their building plans, that'll only go to your commission. There's no hearing, but there's a review by your commission. What your commission would have to find is that the final plan matches the master land use plan. And there's, we'll go through that when that comes. But again, that recommendation is stated on your screen, or stated on your staff report and shown on the screen. And then, like I said, we have a couple, one other presenter and then other folks for the public testimony. If you wish to take a break, ma'am.
Okay.
Could you clarify this, your opening comments, was that in January, whether they approved or not, projects went into commission? Did I hear you correctly? And is that the source of the planning staff or is that the government?
No, that's the, ma'am, just asking. So, ma'am, that's how our, that, Mr. Thompson, that's-
Can you repeat that question, just so I can hear it?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The staff started the presentation by announcing, as I understand it, that this project is going to the city commission, hopefully in January, with or without your approval. And my question, is that what you said?
No, that's not what I said.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Here's what I said. Well, yeah, I'll tell you. So, very simple. Your commission, we'll tag-team this, okay. So the commission has got to approve or deny this, or continue it, but let's say they approve or deny it. The commission is a recommending body. No matter whether they recommend approval or denial, the project goes to the city commission, because that's how the process works. Everybody's-
Okay, it's not a request, it's a process.
Yeah. No, 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 it's a process. And the thing that makes the determination is staff, engineering staff reviews the Mylar plat, and sometimes that takes a few days, and sometimes it takes a while longer. And so we don't take things to city commission until that review, and then there may be some other items are, are accounted for.
Okay.
Does that help you out?
Uh, yes.
So it's a process?
It's the process, okay. It's not from the source.
Donald, one second. Commissioner Buckmeyer?
Yes, sir.
And if it were to be continued?
If it were to be continued, then it would come back to your commission at the date that your commission would continue it to, sir.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to push pause and take a five-minute break. And when we return, we'll hear from Ken Lepper. Okay, well, let's get started again. Pretend I have a gavel, calling it to order again. There we go. Okay, we'll start off, hour two, with-
We have a presentation here from Dr. Lepper, so let's just get, get this one brought up here. Okay, ma'am, there you are, sir.
Yep. Thank you. Madam Chairman, I wanted to thank you for referring to me as Ken before the break, because I just want to say I'm here as a resident of the neighborhood and a citizen, and I'm going to make observances and offer my personal interpretation, so it's not connected to my role as a professional, but just as a resident of the neighborhood. I also want to point out that I am not a dues-paying member of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association. Over a decade ago, they made the determination that cooperation and compromise were good for the neighborhood, and I, I disagree with that extremely. So I'm here to offer a different spin that some folks in the neighborhood might have, rather than the association.
Sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm quite sorry. My name is Ken Lepper. I live at 1021 8th Avenue North. So I, I want to offer, I, I made slides because I wanted to try to stick to five points. And I think a little bit of background context is important. So I call the first point, "Promise is Broken." I've been involved in concerns and, and trying to move the neighborhood forward and make it a good place to live for over a decade. And we were asked at one point to support the UMU, which I didn't think was a good zoning idea. But we were offered definite and undeniable assurances that if the neighborhood supported the UMU development and, and institution, acceptance of those, that zoning idea, that new development of high-density multi-unit housing, I didn't put that in the slide, but that's what I, new development of high-density multi-unit housing would be restricted to west of Johnson Park. We, obviously, we've seen incursions into the Roosevelt neighborhood in, in many areas east of Johnson Park in, over that decade, or the, over the time the UMU's been in place. And we were naive at that time and took the planning staff and, and city staff at face value that these assurances would be remembered and kept in place, because after all, the North that Crowded Way is to honor your word. Point number two, I call profiteering. I, I heard a little bit of this maneuvering, that this idea that something new is good for the neighborhood and that their project will be good for the neighborhood. And I think good for the neighborhood is, everyone needs to make their own idea and opinion about what's good for the neighborhood. Destroying an entire block of housing is not good for the neighborhood, in my opinion. So this, this project is about profit, not a higher ideal. And this enormous egregious-sized development can be nothing but profit. It's, it's still, you know, the last time I spoke, I was floored that this was even being considered. It's just way too large for our residential neighborhood. And so the second point here is the project has no redeeming value to the neighborhood. It may have value to the DIASEs, but to the neighborhood, and that's not my, well, it is my point of view, but numerous letters that you have in your packet articulate that in one way or another. And so what it really does is it uses our neighborhood, the Roosevelt neighborhood, to make profit for other people. It's a user relationship, and that's not the position that we want to be in. So keep in mind, no redeeming value for the neighborhood. Point three is neighborhoods or high-density development. I think some of the RNA folks, we do agree from time to time, articulated this very well. But- well, but no matter how you look at this, the quality of life in our neighborhood will be reduced by this development. So, increased living density, increased traffic, parking problems, not on my slide, but for me, there's going to be a negative impact on aesthetics and neighborhood feel. I know some folks think new construction is nice, others don't. I intentionally moved into a vintage neighborhood because I like old houses and old trees, and I think other people who chose our neighborhood chose it for very similar reasons, not because they wanted a massive new brick building next door. And Fargo really has a limited supply of these vintage homes and neighborhoods, whole neighborhoods that are vintage. You can't just wipe out a city block of these kinds of buildings. Of course, they need renovated, yes, I understand that, but they, there are many people in the market for a home who don't want a new house in a tiki-taki neighborhood. They want one of these vintage buildings. And so, it really, for me, is a question of, does planning and the city represent the vintage neighborhoods and the citizens in those neighborhoods, or do they represent development profiteers? My other point is who decides for how many? I noted that the staff decided that the conditions for rezoning and replating, et cetera, of PUD were satisfied, and one of the other presenters mentioned that satisfying the criteria does not require your commission to approve the request, and I think you're aware. And so, my questions around this is how many staff actually worked on this? I would imagine less than half a dozen. I don't know if any of them live in our neighborhood, but that provides a different kind of perspective. And the real question is why does that small group get to decide what's appropriate and in the best entrances, interests of a neighborhood of over 8,000 citizens? The planning staff is not an elected position. Planning commissioners are not elected positions, so you don't have a public mandate or some validation through the voting process for making decisions on the behalf of a large group of people. And so, my point number five is, when I was on a board, many times, people came and expressed their concerns, but they didn't tell us what they wanted us to do on the board that was within the scope of something we could do. So, my request to the planning commission is to deny the requests presented in front of you. Do not replat, do not rezone these, some of these properties are single-family and can be reused as single-family. And so, it doesn't require you to do anything other than say, "No, we're going to stick to the zoning the way it is." And my personal experiences with this is I've called, over the years, I've called planning office many, many times when I've seen some hideous multi-unit construction in the neighborhood, and the response is always that it's allowed by zoning, so there's nothing we can do. So, in this case, this project, zoning is on our side. Keeping the zoning the way it is will, won't allow this monstrous thing to be built. So, thank you for hearing me out today, and my request is that you deny these and maintain the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll just park it on that one, and then, folks, we do have the other graphics there. Ma'am, if I just may add one item of information to Mr. Lepper's presentation about who staff is, this is something we put in every staff report. I don't know if Dr. Lepper had a chance to read it. It's on page six of your staff report. This project was reviewed by the city's Planning and Development, Engineering, Public Works and Fire Department staff, parentheses, whose comments are included in this report. So, it actually is reviewed by a broad number of people in the city. On a project like this, it gets to be quite a number of people, actually, through the engineering department and especially in planning, because I'm the case planner, but other planners help review it. As you know, Mr. Nelson in our office has worked extensively on PUDs with the Roosevelt Neighborhoods, provided a lot of advice. All our other staff work on this. So, it is, it is more than two or three people, but yes, just so you know, that there's a broad range of city departments that work on this as well as just the planning staff, just as a clarification. Thanks, ma'am.
Commissioners, at this point, any questions?
Yeah, a question for Donald. I'm looking at the staff analysis under number three.
Which page are you on, ma'am?
This would be page nine.
Okay, number three.
And it says here, the last sentence, "Staff also believes that this proposal and requesting zone change is appropriate for this block only within the Roosevelt Neighborhood." Is that something that is qualification for approval? Or how does that affect staff decisions going forward?
I'll give you a two-part answer here, ma'am. Part one is that that, we've noted in previous discussions, that those blocks, especially along University Drive, all are different, and we're looking at them individually. If I also may ask our Director, Ms. Crutchfield, do you have any further comment on that, ma'am, about that, that point about the individual blocks?
I would prefer to wait until the discussion portion of the hearing. Are we still in a public hearing?
I just was going to let them ask questions, and then I'll open up the public hearing, technically.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. But yeah, so that's, like I said, each one of those blocks is individual, so that's what that refers to. And perhaps we'll have some more comment later.
Thank you.
With that, we'll open it up for public discussion. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to? Just a reminder, come up and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Well, Commissioners, my name is Nick Garai. I live at 621 9th Avenue North, and I want to preface my short remarks with just a couple of statements. One, I am a pastor, so I can understand the Newman Center wanting to expand. I like to dream about my congregation growing as well, and so I don't begrudge them putting a new building and expanding, especially when it concerns collegiate ministry on campus. I also want to preface by saying that many of, some of the things that I'm going to say do dovetail with many of the things that the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association members have mentioned. I live in the Roosevelt Neighborhood. I don't necessarily represent the association, so I just wanted to ask the commission and to urge this commission, as well as the City Commission, to consider a couple of things as you make your final decisions on this and future development plans going forward. I'd like the commission to consider how long it will be before we begin to expend as much time and effort on tax incentives and other means by which single-family owner-occupied housing can be encouraged as what is expended upon the means to increase density and encourage developers to put up multi-unit facilities which are neither affordable nor encourage strong neighborhoods. Terms like infill, walkability, affordability, green space, and others seem to this taxpayer to be like so many spaghetti noodles that are thrown against the wall to see which one will stick to a certain project, a proposed development. As I see more and more of these projects constructed in my neighborhood and even on lots adjacent to my own home, I'm left to wonder whether Fargo desires to continue to be the big, small city in which I bought a home 22 years ago, raised my family, or if it desires to look more and more like larger cities with large populations, along with all the problems that come with that. No parking, no community, little affordable housing, little hope for the average family to have a small piece of the American dream in owning their own home in which to raise their children and enjoy a deep sense of community. And that's really all I wanted to say to this commission, and I do hope that you will listen to this hard-working taxpayer.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience wish to speak regarding the application?
My name is Jean. I live on 11th Street and 12th Avenue, and I would like to suggest maybe instead of all these smart meters, looking into something more healthier for the people because of California and the fires. They are, sometimes they're saying the smart meters are causing fires, and there's lawsuits around that. And I'd like to see something more like Nikola Tesla's range that Steven Greer has on free energy, maybe, or solar panels or fire-resistant housing. And it would be nice to see for disability, maybe at least two places for people who have disabilities, so we can include that, because the laws need to improve around that, because, around disabilities, because they're weak. People would like to see another buffer of housing, because you're having the entrances of traffic on the streets where there's a daycare on 11th Avenue and 12th Street there, and people are already parking on their grass, like three, four cars on 12th Street, and everybody's staring at a, at a parking lot. I'm just wondering, you know, all that water underneath, if there's going to be pollution issues, or if you can look in to make sure that that water doesn't stay, you know, settled under there, where if there's a flood, that it would cause the neighborhood problems. And the health effects of having, you know, fire pits on the roof, there's concerns, because there's fire pits and college students all over roofs falling off them, garbage everywhere with the fire pits. I don't know. People really just don't really want all them apartments there and all that parking there, so I'd like to see some things that support the community. I don't think the affordable housing is affordable. I think it should be under $160,000 to support maybe parents going to Roosevelt or student teachers coming in where they need student teachers to come in for the schools, things like that, not rezoning and replating for, because when you drive down from 19th Avenue down, it's so high, and people are rollerblading off into the street and parties, and they're throwing things down at the cars and things like that, and I don't want to see that existing there. You have people wearing their pants hanging down, there's a daycare right there, they have fall language written, I think it was like next to 1126, there's 1122 all the way to 1138. They have vulgar language written on the garage, and kids have to walk by that and after their nights of partying with lights and stuff, condoms laying on the ground, and garbage all up and down the street. So, that's like more different. So, I'd just like to see not that happen with all these apartment buildings, and healthier, you know, and stuff like that, and also maybe with a tower, I don't know, the height level with flying, if there's some sort of landmark, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion? Any questions? Commissioner Gonclom.
Question for Mr. Nygaard. With the presentation by the neighborhood, and I think the neighborhood addressed, contacted most of us on the board, and I think a good share of us felt that the townhouses were a step, a step in the right direction. And I was particularly impressed with it, with the idea that, I think, what's being proposed by Roars on this does help, I think, set the tone possibly for other developments. And what would be your response to the, to the, to the neighborhood's request to, say, go to 24 units of townhouses and then lowering the number of fixed rate soon?
Well, the townhome experiment, if you will, is, is something that is a, is a direct response to some of the comments we heard from the neighborhood. We can't find an example of where that's been successfully developed in the Roosevelt So, I think, I think that's a difficult task. The 13 units represent about a $3.5 million investment in the neighborhood in single-family housing, and frankly, we're just not prepared to go any greater than that and take the risk. Now, we might have wild success, and then we could apply that, you know, and maybe some other redevelopment opportunities, but for this one, that's, that's a big bite for us at this time. The other thing to consider is we're balancing the needs for the economies of the apartment building and the amenities that the students want and demand. We just can't continually shrink down that and still provide the fitness centers and the other things that make these developments attractive. And of course, the diocese have their own needs to be met, too. So, in juggling all three of those, we did, we did consider more townhomes, we also considered less. We came up with this number because it happened to balance kind of all the needs. So, at this point, we wouldn't be interested in expanding that anymore.
Commissioners, other questions? More discussion?
Larry, you were saying that on 13, you, you make it, you think you can make it work, the 13 townhomes?
Well, we kind of backed...
Is that just, just a kind of a market, you know, throw a dart at the wall and think you can make that work?
Well, we've got a similar, somewhat similar project where we've just completed the sale of condominiums in South Fargo, so we're taking the cues from, from that. But the real hard thing, I mean, everybody talks about how everybody wants single-family housing in Roosevelt Neighborhood, but the hard thing is to do it in a new construction price point, you know, and, and so there's a disconnect between what it costs to build new and who can actually afford to buy that. And so, that's, that's the unknown to us. I mean, we can't statistically prove that this is going to be real successful, but we're willing to take a chance. How did we get to 13? It was a balancing act, and like I said, at one time, we had eight, at one time, we had 16. We did have 24 at one time, but it was a different mix. It was more stacked. We finally came up with this compromise as kind of the best blend of pricing, style, form, function, everything fit together, so.
Is there, you know, when you heard the comments from the association, willing to try to, you know, they, they could come to 30 in terms of the density, is there any other way to configure it to get to that point so you could find a happy medium here with, with the Neighborhood Association?
Well, we honestly spent a lot of time relooking at all aspects of it. I don't, I don't know what it is. The answer isn't to just build more townhomes. At least in our mind, we can't do that, justify. We even looked at the possibility of building rental townhomes, but the investment to create a townhome like that and then to get the rental return on it just doesn't make sense for us. So, actually, when we had, as I said, we talked about more townhomes at one point, some of those were rental. We just don't feel comfortable with that either, so we went back to the market rate for sale.
Do you see, you know, because you're doing a lot of development in these neighborhoods and other parts of the city, too, if you have housing stock that is stressed and at some point has to be redone, do you see it that there's no way around doing? do you see it that there's no way around doing things other than apart, larger apartment buildings? Or can, is there, is there a model which you could find a way to do, you know, something that would be more adequate to the community, more friendly to the existing housing around there, and still make it profitable?
This is probably the closest thing we've come up to, with something that is affordable and might fit into the, into the neighborhoods and match the existing tenor of the neighborhoods or the, the architecture. One of the problems with, you know, the single-family stock that's there is if it's too run-down, it's too expensive to maintain, and, and then it becomes unaffordable. Also, you know, can the people do that kind of work? It's, there's a whole lot of issues, and we've talked to city staff about that. You know, there's, there's a lot of complications involved in buying a house that's dilapidated and trying to fix it up and make it affordable. I don't think anybody's figured out exactly how to do that, but this is an opportunity for somebody that doesn't have that skillset or ability to buy something brand-new and still live in the neighborhood. I don't know if I answered your question, Scott, but it's, it's something that we kicked around a lot for, for this project, and just the, the whole issue of single-family housing in the Roosevelt neighborhood.
And I guess, you know, we, we expect there are going to be circumstances where a developer buys up all of the houses along one side of the street, and they're all not necessarily in the same condition when they're purchased. And, and, you know, does that mean that all of them are condemned at some point because we can't get over the threshold? Is there some other way to do this? I, I think this raises a lot of concern for the neighborhood, and, and, you know, it's not, not only for the neighborhood, but if I'm, you know, the diocese, and I want to have engagement with the community, the neigh, surrounding neighborhood, I don't want to have all that housing stock slowly deteriorating. We want to have some ability for that to continue and be successful for, for families in the neighborhood.
All I could say is a lot of it depends on the, the quality of the housing stock you start with, as to whether or not you can afford to invest in it to make it better, or some of it's just gone beyond repair.
I just want to comment to city staff, maybe, but, you know, I, I live about six blocks from this development, and so I think I live closest. And one of the things that hit home with me was the pastor's comment about the city trying to do more to, to make sure single-family housing stays relevant, because I know on my block, I have the newest house on the block. I think it's 88 years old. And so, but there's a house right next to me that probably is in the condemnation state or very close to it, and I'd hate to see the rest of the block get in the situation where it comes before our board. And so, I think Commissioner Staufferin's point is that we're sort of in a tough place when you come with these blocks where there are mostly houses that we are welcoming redevelopment of. I think the neighborhood probably wants investment in, in the block as well. So I think as a city, we need to do more to try to figure out how to keep homes from getting to that state where it puts us all in a tough situation, puts the neighborhood in a tough situation, and, and it puts the developer in a tough stitch, situation, too. And I'm sure he doesn't like coming here and, and spending the time and effort to go through these things, but I appreciate his willingness to redevelop as well and, and put the time into it, because I think we have a good, good project or a better project than we've seen previous months, and so. But I think that's on us as a city, not just do that, but maybe get back to the previous question, too, about this, is, we're looking at this one block, we're not looking at the neighborhood. That's good and bad, but I think it, it does ask the question, okay, what's, what's the next project before us next month? What are we sending out as a message to the development community and to the neighborhood? And so, I, I see University Avenue as, right across from campus, is maybe an ideal place for students to live. I mean, that's why it's called University Avenue, but I don't necessarily think the next block to the west is, or maybe even block to the, to the south is. But, uh, I don't know what message we're sending if we do approve this to those adjacent blocks, because we have no protections for the next block or for the, for the neighborhood to have any more confidence in us or the process. Think, whatever we do here, we should look at how do we work on the next block to make sure it doesn't get to this situation and put everybody in a tough situation.
Well, yeah, I don't know if you want me to talk now or-
Yeah, respond to the, the last sentence in there that Commissioner Morgan-
Yeah, I guess I can respond to Commissioner Morgan's comment, too. I think, and, Commissioner Shire, I think, and Commissioner Staufferin, I think those are all excellent comments and things we've been wrestling with our staff as, so in answer to one of the testimonies, all of staff is working on this. All 15 staff members are working on this case in various capacities, plus the, the other departments, as Donald mentioned. And I think the point on that sentence, and maybe out of context, it reads a little weird, but in terms of, and I'm not criticizing Donald, that's my language, and so, just, but I think in the dialogue that we've been having with the neighborhood, is particularly, specifically to those questions, on how do we guarantee and how do we ensure that what is right on this block isn't the same vision as what's on the next block to the east or to the west, or to the north, or to the south? And, and so, we know that there's other development projects kind of humming along the edge here, watching this case as well. And so, we wanted to kind of make a statement that, in staff's opinion, that this, we don't believe this case is setting precedent. We are looking at this case in particular to what is situationally and contextually around it. The fact that it's across the street from NDSU, the fact that it's on one of the busiest intersections of the city, and the fact that we are in a neighborhood with a corridor that leads right to downtown. And so, one of the challenges I expressed to some of the residents as we were meeting is, is that vision for Roosevelt neighborhood, this is going to sound, uh, a little flippant, and I don't mean this at all, it's more kind of, as we talk as staff, what is that vision for the downtown neighborhoods? Kind of like when we did the downtown plan and focus, you know, there's a lot of conflicting visions, as we can see on this case. And, and so what is that commonality? And that's what we mean by compromise. How do we collectively find a vision so cases like this, or, you know, I'm assuming, everybody wants is a simpler process, an easier process, and not as, not as stressful, if you will? And so we know transition is hard. We know growth and change is hard. We know as visions change, we know that's hard. And is the vision, you know, talking to other people, not, not the people in this testimony, but contextually, as we talk about our core neighborhoods as a whole? What does that family of today look like? What is that act like? Who are the residents of the school? What does that family structure look like? What does that affordability point look like? You know, again, the average wage is not even affording a $250,000 townhouse, you know? And so, and so what is all those, all of those complexities? And so, as you know, our entire department is fairly new in our positions over the last year, and/or are different, are in different positions. And so as we combine the community development work and the committee, Community Development Committee's block grant work with this work, we're seeing where those similarities a lot, align. And we know those processes are very, very, very slow. And, and so right now, so just at City Commission last night, we had a Community Development Block Grant request, and that's actually on your item here tonight, later tonight. But one of the parts that goes along with this request is CDBG monies that we have available to acquire housing, single-family houses, and subsidize those houses for neighborhood stabilization. That might get us three houses, you know, at $550,000. And, and so, to turn them around into a place where someone feels safe and comfortable to live in. And so, so it's a slow process. And to Jim Leszkowicz's point, maybe if we'd started some of these activities in the 80s, you know, we'd be in a different position today if the economic structure in our community was different, and if we had, quite honestly, revenue coming to the acquisition of houses. The revenue that we're having is, is, that we have to work with today is federal-funded, and so there are restrictions that are part of that. One of, I guess, one of the things that is highlighting this case is, is the whole city-wide, you know, kind of community thinks about this case, is, you know, are there private monies? Are banks willing to do more loans? Is the NRI program evolving to be, you know, adaptable? So those are all discussions we're starting to have, and, but unfortunately are not answers that we have for today, but knowing that these are all things we're working for. And unfortunately, I hear myself, and it sounds like lip service, and so, and it's just part of government, as you all know, and it's part of conversation. And so, staff is very torn about this case. Based on what we hear today and what we see on this block, we're recommending approval based on the fact that what is there today doesn't, isn't the highest and best use. And so we're simply looking at what is being proposed, and do we think that fits? You know, and the relationship to the immediately abutting blocks. We do realize this creates change in our community. We don't believe it's negative change. And, and so that's where the, the point of our recommendation. Is it based on hard science? No.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, I have one more question. On page 11, um, let's see, it's under improved continuity between NDSU, Main, and downtown campuses. It says that, um, in the GO 2030 Plan, Fargo will encourage development of the 10th Street Corridor and the University Drive Corridor with a strong focus on mixed-use development, student-oriented facilities. So that kind of contradicts, in a sense, what we were just discussing, because if there were going to be continued development along 10th Street and University, or new development on, in those blocks between, say, 12th Avenue and Main Avenue, that would contradict what we were saying about this, well, of course, this is a much bigger project that may be, this, that may contradict with what's saying mixed use. But at the same time, it does refer to development along those two corridors. So I'm just wondering, you know, with that GO 2030 Plan, if that somehow is setting a precedent, too, for continued development upon, along those two corridors?
Well, it's setting a precedent in regards to, I should back off, because, and I think, you know, thank you for your, your question, because that reminds me of one of the testimony points that I heard tonight, as well as I just wanted to clarify, because that's kind of my aha moment as part of this, and staff's, as we start talking about this discussion. You know, going back to the original neighborhood plan that Mr. Lepa was referring to, with the mixed-use density, and then, you know, those categories of different housing types, I believe what is happening is we have different definitions. And so clarify, you know, slowing down and having those definitions and clarity of what that vision is. And so, when I look at the growth plan and the land use plan for the neighborhood as adopted from 2009, you know, while I say this particularly planning development isn't necessarily setting precedent, we're looking at it on a context, block-by-block basis. So the block to the north, the block to the south, east and west, are going to have potentially different results of what we look at and what might be appropriate for density, you know? Whether, I see a lot of difference between a six-story building, a five, four, three, two, one-story building. There's a lot of design, urban design discussions that happen with that. When we look at, so while I, being said, we're looking contextually, this case isn't changing the zoning, the growth plan, land use, the future land use plan, so that future land use plan still stands, and any, any application that comes forward would be compared against that future land use plan. That future land use plan, if you were to look at it, it's probably in the staff report here, you know, goes up and down the 10th Street Corridor and up and down the University Drive Corridor, and talks about that character along those two arterials are going to be slightly different than east and west. And so that's what we're trying to talk about. But I think it brings a bigger point. One of my things that I hope to bring back in front of you in 2019, again, a lot of it is resource-dependent, is a growth plan change, where we change those colors, because if you look to the east and a block north on the growth plan, you know, if we're having this discussion here, I don't want to have that discussion in the future, so we need to change those colors to be less dense in our definition. So these are definitions that are in our land use plan, in our planning vocabulary. You know, I apologize if, you know, the layman terms and our technical definitions haven't been fully coordinated, and so, but that's where that, that difference of opinion or what was promised in 2009 therein lies a lot of that misunderstanding or miscommunication.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions or discussion?
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, it really seems that this conversation, this project, is a pivotal one, in the way that Fargo citizens, neighborhoods specifically sort of view how the city and the planning commission deal with these sort of projects. And I, I was, I don't know, really satisfied to hear today the amount of work and energy that the RNA put into this, the amount of work and energy that Roers, I really had doubts whether they would be able to make changes that would satisfy or come closer to satisfying the concerns that the neighborhood have. And here we are at a place where we're kind of that close to compromise. And I think it sends the right message to all of Fargo that the planning commission does consider these things individually, that they are listening to citizens, that they are working with neighborhoods, and working with developers. And so, I would, I'd be kind of unsatisfied with any outcome that doesn't sort of meet that compromise, because it's so close. And that's, that's all I've got to say.
Nicole, during the course of all the discussions between, with staff, had both of the Neighborhood Association involved, did, did this proposal that the association brought up, were you involved in any discussions, say, "Look, we could agree at, at this density level"? And were you involved in those discussions? Is that something that just was a recent?
No, I think it's, uh, I'll, I'll try to set the context, and then maybe Donald can set some of it, and Harold, if we, we need him. But the, I would say, I think the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, maybe just to give credit, has Harold Thompson, who is an architect, on their Neighborhood Association. And so as he would hear conversations, you know, he kind of would, you know, question and want to fully dig in deeper, at a deeper level than we usually do with the Land Development Code. And so this is, you know, him working with the Neighborhood Association, looking at our codes, coming up with something that he thinks could build a compromise. We received that by email and notice approximately about two weeks ago, and forwarded that to the developer. We looked at it, quite honestly, you know, quite honestly, our hands were kind of full in terms of we're not, you know, we're processing the requests that they applicate, applicant, brought to us. So at some points of this process, we are just simply the facilitator of communication and between back and forth. We didn't fully analyze this, or, I mean, it looks like a decent proposal, looks, you know, good and, and technically sound, so it's, but I think we would bring that forward to the, the developer and have him fully bet what is good and bad about it.
Commissioners, other questions? Discussion, or are we ready to act?
I do have one question on the, um, the 13 block of townhomes. How did the, I know you said that there was a, a bunch of different, you know, number of townhomes, and 270,000, is that what you said, like 275,000?
Yes, that's correct.
And those are going to be sold?
Correct.
That's the, and what is the average median house worth in Fargo? I would assume it would be worse, worth less than $275,000.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I think it's, someone, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about 235,000 or something like that?
230, 240?
Yeah.
Do we know in North Fargo what the approximate value of a home is? Because I'm assuming, you know, it's different from North Fargo to South Fargo.
It's probably less than the average.
I think maybe just to add to that real quick, and thank you for your question, I, I think these are fantastic questions, and you'll probably want to go home, but the, the point that Larry made is, that very much is the reality of construction today. And so, I think just about any new development, especially the lower the density, probably the higher the subsidy. And I don't want to make a general statement there, but it's the, the cost of construction, the affordability, and how that correlates is, gets complex really quickly. And the, just as, again, the three houses, three to five houses we hope to purchase through CDBG monies, these are- hope to purchase through CDBG monies, these are, you know, almost dangerous buildings type of housing, still, you know, looking at purchasing for 100 grand. By the time you raise it in demo, you're looking at another 30, 40 grand. By the time you do design services and/or build a new structure, you're looking at another 200 grand, you know. And so, it adds up pretty darn quick. And so, where those offsets and expenses are coming from, I think that's the million-dollar question of a greater community-wide discussion that we look forward to having with Community Development Committee and Planning Commission. And one of the things I also in the work plan for 2019, since we didn't have a brown bag, you guys get to hear this again, but the part of the work plan in 2019 includes having coordinated discussion with Community Development Committee and the Planning Commission, and our, you know, builders and developers, and trying to figure out how we can influence that, that system somehow. I don't know what the answer is.
And if I could make just one more point, we, you know, we looked hard at this from a development standpoint, and we tried to, you know, to incorporate as many of the townhome opportunities as we could. And this is where we landed. And I, we just don't feel comfortable going any more than that. As I said, if we have wild success, I think it's going to serve for a model in the future to do maybe a greater number. But right now, with what we know, this is going to be a handful.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Any other discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the findings of staff as presented in our report. Go ahead.
Okay. There is a motion as written in our packet. Is there a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
There's a second to the motion? Any discussion on the motion? We'll take a roll call vote, please. Commissioner Miguelke has accused himself of this vote. Thank you.
Schneider?
Aye.
Scherling?
Yes.
Holtz?
Aye.
Soblet, oh, sorry, Stafrin?
No.
Morgan?
No.
Bachmeier?
Nay.
Gunkelmann?
Yes.
Tassa?
Nay.
Fisher?
Aye.
And the ayes have it, the motion's been approved. With that, we will close the public hearing. Yep. And go to item?
Yeah.
Well, is Tia Brasseth, or, no? Sorry, Mark, can you, is, or will we hear from Tia on this one, or?
I think Nicole's kind of.
Oh, Nicole, okay. Perfect. We're going to hear the notice of amendments to the community block grant.
Six was, um, whistle drawn.
Yeah, so just a little grounding on what this is. I have one of these in front of you, maybe about seven months ago or so. And from time to time, you're going to be seeing more of these through 2019, as we look to our CDBG HUD home grants. And basically, the way that works is, for those that are familiar with MetroCAG, the Long Range Transportation Plan, we have basically a five-year plan, and we need to amend that plan from time to time as we tweak it to do annual action plan items. So, we report at a five-year vision and a annual one-year vision. And through that, as we do some project projections as we move forward into 2019, we see some changes we need. And so, in front of you is a kind of update, and we're asking for your support in an annual action plan amendment and a five-year consolidated plan amendment. The memo in your packet kind of highlights the details, but basically, we're canceling three projects. And a lot of times, those projects end up getting canceled because of the contractor isn't ready to go when the money's available, or the project and all construction sometimes ends up changing mission or goals. And then, we're adding some public improvement projects, as well as widening the slum and blight abatement area, physical area. That is going to be the tool that allows us to buy more houses. And so, this is part of a citizen participation plan. So, the reason it's in front of you at the planning commission is, we have three steps as part of this process. It goes to the Community Development Committee, it goes to the Planning Commission, and it ends up at the City Commission. We have a 30-day notice period, as well as a public hearing. That public hearing is scheduled for December 17th, at City Commission. And the actual final action at City Commission won't be until January 2nd, but we wanted to inform you of these changes. Hopefully, the memo is, the memo and the, the notice that's in your packet, that's the same notice that goes out to the public. And I'm here to answer any questions, or if you want more detail, just let me know.
Commissioners, any questions?
Nicole, this kind of comes back to us as a planning commission needing more background on this, because this is, now that we're asked to look at some of these things, or just, or be part of that discussion, I think either a brown bag, talking about community block grants and a few other things, would be very, very beneficial.
That's a great idea.
Because I really partially know what we're even talking about here.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'd be glad to break it down. You know, honestly, I'd be glad to break it down, and to further define it, if that would be helpful and give you a little bit more comfort. But I absolutely agree that there needs to be more consolidated work between Community Development and Planning Commission. And so...
And you're all under one roof, I think that's helpful.
We are now all under one roof, effective immediately. So, that's awesome. We also have, part of our reorganization was about bringing these two programs closer together. And so, and so, basically, the slum and blight, I'll just maybe just highlight two sentences about this. Basically, the slum and blight is basically, you have to meet federal criteria to qualify in that slum and blight category before you're eligible. And what, this is all federal funding, 100% federal funding. It comes to us through a pro-rata formula based on population. And so, with that money, we can do certain activities. It has to have three benefiting components. One is low to moderate income, low to moderate geographic area, and the other is through low to moderate income, low to moderate geographic area, or through social service funds that informs the population of that qualification. And so, it requires anybody that's doing part of this work and is part of construction, or do Davis Bacon, to follow environmental regulations, which is why some of those construction projects fall out. And the slum and blight allows us to purchase properties. We take that money, do the blight removal or rehab, and then either put that house back on the market, or partner up with Habitat, or rebuilding together. And then, with that, we often will put a lien against the house to get repayment if that house were to go back on the market. So, we have all those steps in place as part of that. The Great Plains Food Bank and the Jeremiah Program and Youth Works were all construction projects that kind of ended up not meeting federal criteria with either procurement policy or being contractors registered in the federal government, or things like that. And so, those were just activities that we have to let the public know didn't happen. And then, the Gladys Ray Emergency, as many of you probably know, we own the Gladys Ray Emergency Homeless Shelter. We're the only jurisdiction that does. And we are in discussions with them about expanding their services and looking at new locations over the course of 2019. That's a recent add-on. And so, we just wanted to, since we're doing this big change, we're adding that to our greater mission. And then, the Washington Elementary School basically is the neighborhood, and the school reached out to us and said, "Does this qualify"? We said, "Yes". And it does, because I will say, the construction projects are really hard to find. You know, you're working with a nonprofit organization typically, who is not used to the construction industry. We spend a lot of time kind of connecting them in the process. And so, they're really hard to have that capacity. And when we get the money, and that's the other thing, so Congress tells us how much money we get every year, we only have about four months to spend it. So, given our construction climate, we may or may not break it. And so, so that's kind of how the whole system works, and I'll give you a whole brown bag on that. But basically, before we can touch the money and spend it, we have a federal process that we just haven't done a lot of in the past, and now we need to start doing.
Yeah.
And we have a deadline to spend the money by February 2nd.
Commissioners, other questions? Or are we ready to act?
Make a comment, in case somebody hears it that left. But, you know, I think we often hear when we get these controversial cases before us, how, how come they only find out about these things at the last minute? And then, they want to solve the problems before they get to the planning commission. I think commend staff on this, because this is how you solve problems, before they create the situation we just got through. And so, I guess, I'm going to express, you know, my support of the neighborhood associations and how involved they are in things, but also my disappointment that they didn't stay in the room to hear this item or support this item, because I think this is exactly what they're looking for, to prevent the problems that they see in their neighborhood. And so, just commend staff for still going forward with it, even though you don't have the fans behind you.
Any other comments or questions, or entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion?
Yep.
To approve the amendment as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Remind me, any discussion on the motion? Is this a roll call vote? Yes?
Sure.
Let's do a roll call vote, please. That'd be great.
Gunkelmann?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Tassa?
Aye.
Miguelke?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Stafrin?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Scherling?
Yes.
Fisher?
Aye. The ayes have it, it is carried. With another comment, yep, John, go ahead.
Nicole, would you just explain to, we've got three new, four new people, relatively new, with this project, the Newman Center project?
John, speak into this.
With the Newman Center project that we approved, it goes to the commission. And if it gets approved at the commission, explain now Roar's process and that, and how it comes back to us again.
Oh, sure.
So, people understand that it's not...
No, excellent point.
Because we didn't, we didn't, none of the approval talked about the numbers of units or any of that.
Right. So, what happens next is, as Donald was mentioning, you know, once all the items are ready, it'll go to City Commission to, with your recommendation. And then, when the applicant is ready to proceed to the next step, typically, that next step is pulling the building permit, it'll come back in front of you as a final site plan review. Because it's the planned unit development, it requires a, it takes that site plan review out of the administration level. So, typical site plans come in through the inspections office, we review them. You remember the wiser, because it's all automated. Because this is a public process, you see the site plan. And so, as part of that site plan review, staff will do the review on your behalf, and then we'll present that to you. And then, it's your opportunity to kind of affirm or influence the site plan in any way.
And you hold, so with the numbers that were talked about, just so everybody understands, that the number of units, the number of this and that, parking and everything, it's...
It's codified, yeah.
Yes, okay. So, I mean, you have the, the exact design of the building is to be determined yet, but those numbers still mean quite a bit...
Absolutely.
...to the final project.
Absolutely. So, we look at all those components that Donald had in his chart, you know, number of parking, number of landscaping, all of that. And then, if they need to be amended, and depending on if it's a minor amendment or a big amendment, but any amendments come in front of you as part of the process. So, even 10 years from now, decide they want to do an addition, or heaven forbid, but, you know, something to that degree. Wrong choice of words. But if they want to do some amendment, that would come in front of you. We would open this ordinance against, because this becomes an exact ordinance. We would open this up, and it would be back in front of you. And so, every change would have to come, come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Should she stay for another 15? No? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.